Hello, I'm LP Mainville, I'm the Athlete Development Director. And it's a pleasure to be with you tonight.
Okay, well, there you go, guys. There's who's on call here today. So, like I said, any questions, please type in the chat. So without further ado, we'll head on through here. Um, so we're ready to return. We've got some great news. Everybody's doing hard work and, you know, following protocols and getting vaccinated and all that good stuff. So we're definitely looking forward to a good September. We are planning on a full regular season structure for 2021-2022 with competitions beginning in November. Five events for early contact initiative divisions. So that would be our first three divisions of our competition system, which is rally ball four-on-four, rally ball six-on-six, and our traditional non-specialized. We will have a regular four competitions for the 15 to 17 new age group and then five events for our 18 news. And then we are playing for an Ontario championships in April 2022. Really unsure what that's going to look like still, but it's looking good. So we're really, you know, still have our fingers crossed that we'll be able to offer a special event for everybody at the end of our indoor season. And obviously, we will continue to support our clubs with COVID-19 protocols, just to make sure we can return to indoor competition safely. So we'll be working very feverishly on these stage through regulations that were just released over the weekend. So stay tuned for that as well. But that's a whole other topic, right? Okay. So what's new for 2022? Hopefully, people who are on this call have also been aware of our other town halls and our communications that we sent out for early contact initiative. And our early contact initiative is set of rules that really help progress our entry level age divisions or divisions to make sure that they're developmentally appropriate and create opportunities for young players where they're finding their fit and giving them the best possible experience for long-term retention and success. So these are graphics here kind of do a brief description of what actually our initiative is. So it has a, we are keeping in line with our long-term development model, which would be put out by Volleyball Canada as well as Sport Canada. And it's a progression of the developmentally appropriate format of the game for each age grouping and developmental level. So as we can see, we've got smash ball one V one, two V two at our, the youngest age divisions, which progresses into triple ball, both four-on-four and six-on-six, which we are adopting for next year. And then moving on to a six-on-six volleyball. Obviously, that will, rules and regulations would be developmentally appropriate as well. And one of our biggest changes is our age eligibility. So we are broadening these categories for our entry level to make sure that athletes are finding their fit. They're not being put into a game that they're not ready for. And that's simply by expanding the eligibility requirements. So if we look at four V four rally ball, which would be our very first division within competition stream, we're looking at 2009 and under. And then six-on-six rally ball, we are looking at 2008 and under. And then traditional non-specialized will be doing 2007 and under. And there are some, there's the female 18-month eligibility on that and then a 24-month for males. So the the girl's side of the game because of numbers and, and what have you. There's only a year and a half eligibility for that division and the boys do have a two-year eligibility. So more information will be coming about about this. Our, oops. Our website is almost up and ready to go where you'll find all this information and it's just going to be under our competitions tab and it'll be located on the dropdown menu as early contact and we'll have lots of resources and information there for everybody, including some of these graphics and some other stuff that our coaching committee is working on as well as the indoor development committee and things like that. So stay tuned for that. But that is definitely what's new for next year and we're very excited about it. Um, and ranking, ranking is going to be a bit different for this year as well, considering we didn't have too much of a season to go on. So I'm going to hand this over to Mark and he will chat with you guys about the rankings for next year.
Thanks, Carrie. Yes, as some of you know, the rankings are definitely one of my favorite topics to talk about. I'm a numbers guy, so I love talking about this inside and out. So as you're all aware, it's going to look kind of unique this year and compared to what we're normally used to with us typically just looking at OC's final result, and that's a team's preseason ranking. But we not only don't have rankings from last year, but also the previous year didn't have a final rank. So we're, we thought the easiest approach would be just to look at the, a team's end of season ranking for the 2019 to 2020 season. So every age group was able to finish except the 16 new and 18 new age groups going into the 2020 OCs. So for the most part, we had a pretty good list of results that we could use. So simply put, it's just a team's top two results from the 2019 season, which I know it sounds a little kind of offered. So much has changed in those last two years, but I'll explain a little bit further down. Once we talk about the 15 U to 18 U age groups and how we'll kind of account for that ranking and how it's not too accurate. So just, just went over that first part there. And then as Carrie mentioned, the new early initiative, early contact initiative for this season. So as she mentioned, it is very focused on avoid, so I should say, we're trying to take away focus from winning and doing the whole climb the ladder promotion relegation. So for four-on-four rally ball, everything will be in the same level. So there'll be trillium across the board. And all of these events are non-priority events. So there's no playoffs, no medals. So a huge focus is on development and not on winning, which we traditionally have in the past. Six-on-six rally ball, it's a little bit of a, as one age group getting older, so a little bit more emphasis on playoffs as we've introduced two of the five events will be a priority event, which means there's playoffs and medals awarded. And as of right now, we have down trillion for all events, but realistically, once we see the registration numbers, we have a strong feeling on the girls' side at least. After that first priority event, which means that's the first event where we have playoffs, we will most likely split that into two divisions, kind of like a 50-50 split, just with so many teams and trying to meet competitive balance goals, we'll, we'll split that in half. And while only splitting into two age group, or sorry, two skillsets, we'll still be able to keep events as local as possible for teams. And traditional non-specialized, this is getting one age group older and once again, a little bit more emphasis on winning. So here we have four of the five events are priority events, which means once again playoffs and medals awarded. So we will be able to have a few more divisions and a few more opportunities to break out and meeting our competitive balance goals. And so I'm not sure if Carrie mentioned this, but one of the big key features here with this early contact initiative is that we will not have regulation or relegation. So even though we do have tiers built out for traditional non-specialized, we are trying to limit the, I guess, the scary relegation potential after each event for coaches and ultimately giving teams a chance to focus on development once again. And on the girl's side, similar to six-on-six rally ball, depending on the number of team registrations, there's a very good chance we'll have a select division in there as well. And we have an ideal percentage breakdown that we'd like to see to keep that pyramid intact and, and we would go by those percentages. And once again, it all comes down to registration numbers and this year we're, it's anyone's guess at this point as to what these numbers will look like. And moving to the 15 new to 17 new age group. So this is where the, the first age groups that will come into play where we actually have a ranking that we'll be using. So for example, 15 new, we will be looking at the 13 new 2020 end of season ranking, which again will be based on a team's top two result. And traditionally, we would have these age groups broken out into more divisions for that very first tournament because the previous Ontario championship rank is only a few months prior. So we usually could have a, we usually had a fairly high confidence in those rankings being decently accurate, which allowed us to break out everything for that first event. But to offset our two-year basically gap right now, we only have two divisions to, for example, for 15 new girls and 16 new girls to start off. And then it's almost treated as a seeding tournament. And then from there, we will break out into the full four or five division pyramid. So 15 and 16 new girls are similar. And then 15 new to 17 new boys. And again, here you would typically see us starting off with trillium championship and premier all on that first event. But to account for the rankings not being very accurate and lower numbers on the boys' side versus the girls' side will just be starting trillium across the board. And then right away for the challenge all the way to the Bugarsi Cups, we'll have the three division breakout. And 17 girls is very similar, except we're based on our predictions for registration numbers. We don't quite think there'll be enough teams to have a trillium green and trillium white. So at the moment in time, it's just a trillium. But there again, once we see our registration numbers for that first tournament, we might be able to have it split that trillium into two different tiers, trillium green and trillium white. And 18 new girls, this is the only age group where we're going to start off with three. Where traditionally, we would always start off with four. But since these are from the 16 new girls' results back in 2020, we felt these were a little bit more accurate since those girls have already played for a few years, which would allow us to start off in trillium championship and select. And the boys' side again, just due to smaller numbers, we'll start off everyone at trillium and then break out to championship and premier for the final events. And I'll pass it back to Carrie for, talk about 19 new eligibility.
Okay, again, this is what was, we touched on this again when we were doing our early contact initiative as a beside, just to, as an aside, actually. We, as we all know, we, we have a bunch of kids that missed out on their 18 new year. So in order to capture those kids that are still potentially interested, we have introduced a 19 new eligibility. So you are eligible to compete in Ontario volleyball regular season events and Ontario championships, provided they aren't a part of the OC double A, O U A U sports, C C double A's teams for the current season. So they aren't going to be limited to number and roster and they'll be included actually in the 18 new division. So that will be new. And, and just a note on that as well, Volleyball Canada championships, their eligibility will be different. So please be mindful of that if you're, when you're coming up with your plans and, and registration and things like that. I know, I believe Volleyball Canada will be allowing some 19 news on there. If they haven't released their updates yet, however, they will be limited. So just keep that in mind when you are creating your teams this year. So yeah. And then we also have the introduction of the ceiling rule for this year. So that falls that come in contact on your side of the net with the ceiling will be still playable. So we will have a full breakdown of those rules and regulations in our youth competition manual that usually gets published mid-August. So it'll all be put in there for everybody who wants to know the, the nitty gritty of that. So that's where it'll be. Um, okay. So that's really all what's new for this coming year. Considering we never had a year last year. So we are going to review what was actually new for last year. So these are just a little refresher's reminders about what we wanted to implement last year but couldn't. So yeah, so we'll just kind of go through these as well. And then she will be on to LP. So I'm sure everybody knows that we do have new balls for next year. They are going to be three different competition balls. They are listed here. I believe, Alicia, give me a nod if they're available at Connect Stuff. Yes, they're available at Connect Stuff. So you're not obligated to use them by any means, but if you wish to, that's where you can get them. So, but they will be used at com, during competition. But again, you're not mandated to buy them on any level. So we had a lot of questions about warmups, considering a lot of the, the rules that have come in in regards to concussion protocols. So coaches are permitted to toss balls over the net during the on-court warmup time, but they have to do so within the three-meter line. So just making sure that you're staying protected, that your athletes are staying out of the line of the, the hard-driven balls. And that's where you're permitted to stay if you're tossing balls over the net. And another reminder is our purple card. And this is for spectators. So it was piloted last year, oh goodness, two years ago now. And it went over well. It was used a few times and overall it, we had great feedback from it. So we will be rolling out for all age divisions. So a purple card will be able to be given from the referee to any spectators that are not abiding, are not being very sports person-like. So that's little reminders. Okay, and what's new for Ontario championships? So we are delaying the release of the dates and age divisions for April. And this is just because we don't know what it's going to look like. We don't know what our regulations are going to be. So we can't assign our divisions and scheduling is all dependent on the numbers and where we can fit. So we hope to have that up not too long, but you know, we're doing the best I can with the information that we have. If we can push it out there earlier, then we will. There is a new hotel booking process in place, allowing the Farvis teams to have the opportunity to book rooms first. So teams that are over 400-plus kilometers away qualify. So that just gives them an opportunity to make sure that they are not, they're getting a hotel within the region. And it should be noted that these are just probably about 6% of our teams that were registered in 2019. All bookings will be managed through HTG and we'll be assisting with HTG as well. We are looking at the, the travel subsidy under, it's under review. It's not being taken away at all by any means. We're just kind of looking at how to distribute those funds and, and how to best make sure it works and does what it's supposed to do. So those are some more items here. And as well, last September, we did update NRS and it is now MRS. So it's a new registration system. We do have how-to manuals and how to register to navigate the new system. And again, any registration questions also can go to Sheri Bennett. She's our master at that system and we'll be happy to help out anybody who comes into any issues. And as well, so all athletes, this was supposed to be for last year as well. All athletes must register an MRS prior to attending a club tryout or practices prior to the 2021 season. So as of September 1st, when registration opens, before any of you, even your resigned athletes, they can start registering as of September 1st. They need to go in there to make sure that they're ready for the upcoming season and are covered by all their waivers. If you guys are, as we are opening up as well, athletes still need to be registered in the system for insurance purposes, if you're doing anything under your club name. So make sure that's done as well. So if you have kids that are coming to a tryout, they need to be registered in MRS. There's a zero cost for that. We just need to know that they're signing off on their waivers. We need to know that the Rowan's Law is covered. We need that COVID waiver now. So all of this is done actually just as an automatic thing in MRS. So we really, it's easy for them. It's a step, yes, we know, but it has to get done. We've got to make sure that we are following laws and rules. As we all know, Rowan's Law is actually Ontario legislation. So it's not something that we can easily just brush off. And then players that get selected to a club, they can just be upgraded through MRS. And then you can just carry on that way and pay their, their club, their fees and what have you. So we're asking you that if you just have, everybody has a cellphone, that they were just able to say, you know, show who's ever checking in at registration and let them know that they have proof of registration prior to stepping foot on the court. It's also something that can be done on site as well, if there's a parent guardian there for any minors. So yes, so that's a reminder from last season. Again, any questions can go to Sheri Bennett. We may be able to level ourselves through it if, if you're not having any luck there, but she's great. So she'll be able to help you guys out. Um, we're from Volleyball Canada reminders, the Safe Sport Training Modules will be mandatory for Nationals in 2022. So this is mandatory for anybody with contact within, with an athlete, both director and direct. And you do require a locker membership, I guess, or an account. So this is just where the the locker is the N C double, is it still the CP certification where it logs all your training and things like that? So that is required. And there's no cost to the manual and there's no cost, cost to set up an account in the locker. But you do need to take it. There's a link there. It's great training. I did it when it was first came out and it's really good. It's really worth a watch for anybody who's involved in sport on any level, parents, admin, club, coaches, assistant, anything. It's, it's really good. All right. And now it's up to our.
Hey Carrie, I was just going to jump in here so we can answer some of these youth con questions and then that we could head on towards the coaching side of things.
Let's do it.
So first question here, sorry, just pull this up. Richard had a question. I, if, oh, regarding the school boards and specifically most likely, I'm assuming he's talking about with the step three and the new rules around that. Alicia, do you want to touch on that? Cause I know you're looking into that a little bit today regarding the step three.
We have a presentation next Tuesday for the town hall for step three protocols. Carrie does have a slide on this at the very, very end, which is like some good news with the the regulations. So actually, sorry, I don't know what the question is. I didn't see it. But in terms of school boards in the regulations that were released on Friday, the government finally put in the regulations that schools are allowed to reopen their indoor facilities. So that's great news for all of us. So we even today with Mark, Caitlin and Carrie was talking to him about reaching out to the school board to find out what that means from them. So now the government's saying it's allowed to happen. So how do we get in there? So I don't know if that answered your question, Mark. I'm not sure what it was, but it's, they're allowed to reopen now. So it's good.
Yeah. And, and you did hit on that. And just a note from my end, I was reaching out to a couple of school boards this afternoon. I didn't get a response, but I'm assuming they're working on some sort of update and protocol on there. And that will give us all an idea very soon as to what will be allowed. Uh, next question we have, the ceiling rule, I know it was on the same slide, so I could definitely see how this could be confusing. It's not just for the 18 and 19 years. It's for, for everyone across youth competitions. And next question, we, a question came up about if teams can play in two age groups as we know across the board, this happens a lot. And as of right now, our plan is to be run the season how we typically would, which means you are more than welcome to sign up for different age groups and play in your ski season how you'd like. But at the end of the day, if, if we have no idea what COVID is going to do and we don't know what's going to happen the fall. So there is always that slight chance where we would make it a rule where you only can play in one age group, as that would help us cut down team registrations by about 24%. But as of right now, that's definitely not our intent and we're hoping for everything to be as close to normal as possible. A COVID question here, are we allowed to require proof of vaccination for both coaches we hire? And for athletes who wish to try out for our teams? I will pass that on to Joe to answer that.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for joining us. Vaccine requirements, that's an excellent question that is still coming up everywhere with, obviously with people's work, with travel, you name it. So obviously the rationale is there for the health and safety of others that are interacting together to, here's a rationale to ask for the vaccine. But there's a couple of things to keep in mind when doing that. You are asking for sensitive health information. So if you are collecting it, you have to have a way to keep it confidential. You have to have a way to protect that information and keep it secure. At any time, um, the individual could cite an exemption due to human rights. So you have that to consider as well. And so then you also have the next question that I'm assuming is to the club that would be considering this is, what if they don't have their vaccine, then what, what are you going to do about it? So those are all questions to consider as you take, as you follow the string of that. So one of the things to consider is if, if there are individuals that aren't going to get vaccinated or don't have the vaccine or don't wish to show you the proof, then is it something where, you know, you require rapid tests or further, you know, outside still wearing masks while the athletes playing? Like there's things to consider, but just be very careful around the confidentiality of the information, how sensitive it is. And that there are exemptions that also can happen from that. So it's a tough one. It's still to be discussed at a lot of levels and in a lot of different scenarios. So we'll talk about it more in step three.
And just further to Joe, you brought up the rapid tests and that just sparked something in my mind right now. The Canadian Red Cross actually has a grant available for organizations to apply and it goes down to the grassroots level and it's if you want it like institute rapid testing within your club, you can apply to have those free of charge for association. They would help you build a rapid testing plan. But the caveat is every week you have to report on the tests, but it is an option if it's something clubs are looking at.
And I just received an email from the ministry on that too. So we'll have, we can have more information on rapid tests next week. Thanks, Alicia.
Thank you. Next question we had was around 19 new athletes. And if there was any consideration for potential 18 new athletes to be displaced or ultimately not making a team because 19 new athletes are allowed. And we did realize this, this potentially could happen, but that was one of the reasons why we created the, the ultimate flexibility approach for clubs and that you can have and, and a team full of 19 new athletes. You can have a team full of 18 new athletes. You can have a team with a mix of both. And we realized there, there probably would not be too many teams across the board that are 19 new, but you might have a player that, let's say, went off to school and they are only playing intermural as they're not on an actual varsity roster. So they could just try out for the nearby club if they have a 19 new team or 18 new team. So I guess in short, we do realize there is potential with this, but we, we hope with the, the flexibility that clubs have to really create whatever combination or as many 18 new or 19 new teams that they like, that we're hoping that these players would, would find a fit.
I think it's also important just to note as well on that, we're not expecting a lot of 19 new athletes, like a full, you know, cohort to come in. We, you know, there's a lot of pull on our 18 news, whether it's school, work, all that other stuff. So, you know, this is really a great test for us to see what the interest is out there and, and what to expect. And if, you know, moving forward, what like a 19 new, 21 new division may look like. So yeah, we're just, you know, we really want to, we know COVID-19 is really made kids miss out on a lot of things and we want to make sure to build opportunity if we can.
Thanks, Carrie. I also had another question come in about what does the COVID-19 waiver entail? Single backs, double backs, no backs, question mark. Carrie or Alicia, would you be able to expand a little bit on that? Carrie or Alicia, would you be able to expand a little bit on that?
I'm going to hand that off to Alicia, or maybe Joe even.
The online waiver, Duran, correct me if I'm wrong, it has nothing with regards to vaccines, single, double, or none. It's more about the inherent risks of participating in a pandemic. So that's basically what that waiver is covering off on.
Yep, you nailed it.
Perfect. And next question, some athletes do not come to tryouts with a parent. How does that affect the MRS registration for tryouts?
MRS registration can be done prior to the attending of tryouts, so even if they don't have an idea of where they want to go yet, you can still try out, or sorry, you can still register an MRS as a tryout player, and that's valid for any tryout you want to go to. So you just need to register, make sure they have a screenshot or that confirmation email on their phone, and they just can see, here you go, and then you're, you're on your way.
Thanks, Carrie. Next question we have, will there be the rec payment option to avoid any big refunds if things are not ready to go? Or for certain competitions in September to October?
I think we're still kind of, as well, this is kind of was going to be on another slide of coming soon. We're still determining all our fees and everything for next year in regards to how that's going to look. Obviously, I'm sure everybody knows that this COVID has thrown everything for a loop. So we're taking our time and trying to massage those numbers and make sure that we are you know, we're, we're going to do something that's fair and, you know, not raise prices, but we're still kind of, you know, trying to massage those out a little bit. So I'm sure we will make, once we release that information on fees for next year, we'll have any information on membership system that will account for any possible refunds that may pop up.
Next, we, we have a bunch of officials on the call, so this is perfect question that came up. How will the OVA keep the referees safe while officiating tournaments or events?
Safe from COVID? Or like, yeah.
I would assume so, yeah.
I know that, Alicia, you should talk to this.
It's all good. The return to play protocols, we have a lot of appendix items. We also have the referee guidelines on COVID and how to referee, and we have modified match management protocols in place. In terms of indoor, I know we're kind of touching on all of the step three stuff that we'll discuss next Tuesday at our call. But indoors, it's still a mandatory two meters of physical distancing, it's mandatory mask usage. This is also new in the regulations from the Government of Ontario. They've actually put it in the E laws now. So spectators and everyone inside needs to wear the masks. In terms of everything from coin tosses to signing score sheets, we have modified protocols in place to, you know, protect and, you know, keep the safety of all members in mind.
Tryouts are in mid-August, so will registration be open before September?
The trial player, yes, will be available before September. Any full registrations will be open on the membership year, the September 1st.
And just a note for the, that referees comment, would have, I'm assuming referees would be wearing masks then while officiating, correct?
Yes.
As part of the protocols, we mandated the electronic whistles. I know Andrew was on this call as well. So with the referee, the funding that we have in place, we did purchase electronic whistles. So when referees register next year as a member to work the events with their membership, they get mailed an electronic whistle to use for the year.
If if athletes that wish to train with our club from another club, and we cannot acquire gyms, how can we use the summer offer period, question?
Training outside is a great opportunity to still get to get out and play some ball. We can, we need to be creative, whether that's grass or grass or sand. There's even opportunities to do some type of cross-training, things like that. It doesn't have to be with a net, it can be ball work, but it's just something that's organized with your club, and that's identified as training with your club. So it doesn't necessarily have to be indoor six-on-six, the traditional sense of concept of training.
Sorry, just a couple of questions, a couple more popping through here. When will MRS tryout registration start?
We'll look at that when the actual tryout window begins. Again, if they are playing right now, there's nothing stopping them from actually registering. If they are doing club-affiliated activities, things like that. Actually, they, if they weren't registered already for the year. I tend to forget that 2020 even happened because we didn't have any volleyball, so it's kind of.
It's all good. And just to, to expand further, so we are also organizing a club administrator Town Hall session to go over all of these things, so membership fees, event fees, rule of two, you know, everything with MRS and club forums and screening policies and upcoming policies, there's a lot to cover off on. So tonight's really focusing just on the indoor competitions changes and coach eligibility policy. So we do have more information coming because there's, we always have so much to give you guys, and we don't want to spend five hours on a Monday night. You know, wasting, not wasting your time, but taking all those hours away from you. So we have another coming up to discuss all this stuff.
And just comment about with stage or step three starting Friday. I know in talking with Alicia earlier today, they are frantically going through those new protocols, getting, going through the entire approval process. When was the goal, Alicia, to have that posted by?
Your board meeting is Wednesday or Thursday?
Thursday evening, so I think you typed in the answer for Friday posting of information. That seems about right, but we'll get the one pager up there as soon as we can.
Yep.
Perfect. And athletes competing on court, will they be required to wear masks while competing?
As of right. Yeah, so indoor, yes. On outdoors, athletes are allowed to follow grass volleyball, but indoors, yes, the mandate is to wear masks on court while playing.
Last question here, then we can head on over to coaching. Don't worry, LP, I haven't forgot about you. Regarding protocols, you've done an excellent job. However, I've experienced a lot of blow and K this weekend, and it was very difficult. What are options when even coaches don't want to comply?
I'm sorry, we've experienced a lot of.
I guess it's just blowback.
Oh.
So. There you go. The compliance piece, the event staff are there to help with the compliance. Obviously, we're requesting this compliance and all of our protocols so we can keep volleyball going in the province. So let's really work together on making it happen. And we do really need coaches to obviously support that. And really, it's for the athletes, so this is, you know, the activity for them to be able to play. So they can remove their masks when they're playing. It is very clear that if you can't maintain two meters distance, masks are required outdoors and indoors. So that's something that really needs to be kept in mind, that we do want to keep our sport going and be able to keep playing, so please cooperate.
Thanks, John. And LP, it is your time to shine.
Well, shining I do already with this light there in the background. But yeah, thanks, Mark, Carrie and Alicia. This was the very important stuff. Now let's go with the fun stuff. Although I do have some important things to say for once. So coach eligibility policy, this feels like a deja vu for me, because I feel like we had this exact conversation last year. So I know we're talking about the what's new, but a lot of these things are actually not new, and the coach eligibility policy is one of them. But obviously, with the year that we had last year, we understand that not everyone is necessarily familiar with all the new things that were, that were happening last year. So let's go over it again quickly. So this new eligibility policy contrasts with what we've had for many, many years prior to last year, which was kind of focused on forcing coaches to get certified and then enforcing those certifications with fines. This new coach eligibility policy is rather different. It's really focused on safe and responsible coaching. It's designed to be easily completed with modules that are available online to everybody, wherever you are, and doable whenever you want. It applies to all coaches. And not just all coaches, but all people in roles within MRS who are in contact with our youth athletes. And the big, big difference is that all these requirements must be met before your registration. So if you are familiar with the way that we worked before, you know that normally you would be expected to complete some, some training by provincials, and then we would verify provincials and find you if you didn't complete it. This is gone. Now the modules and the training needs to be done before you register, or else you will not be eligible to participate in OVA events. So, yeah, so maybe we can go to, to that policy, if you just click on the link at the bottom there, Carrie. Now, if you go back and you just click on that green, yeah, thing, it should take us to right to the policy. So the policy is on our website. It is in the become a coach section. Needs to abide by the OVA screening policy. So you will need, as usual, to submit a vulnerable sector screen and/or police record check, all right? And this, this year can actually be done with my back check, which is something that you can access online. For accessing this, you can email Kelvin Chang, and he will set you up with a link where you can complete your, your police record check. This is all done online at a very low cost, and then you can send us that information, and we can accept it now because of a change in our OVA screening policy. The second piece of our screen policy is our OVA screening disclosure form. And I will just, I will come back to that one in a minute, because I just want to cover the eligibility piece first. So, so once the coaches are screened, then all coaches must complete the two free modules of Making Headway, which is a module for to learn about how to manage concussions and how to prevent them. And all coaches must also complete a Coaches Association of Canada Safe Sport Training that Carrie told you about a few minutes ago. So that's not only a module that you need to do for Volleyball Canada's national championships, it is also a module that needs to be completed by all adults, you know, and registered coaches who work with our youth athletes. So those are the two, the two modules that are free and must be done by everybody regardless of the role. Now, if you are in a head coach or club technical director role in MRS, you also need to have foundations of volleyball, which is an $89 module that is delivered by Volleyball Canada, and also making ethical decisions online evaluation, which is $85, and which is delivered by the Coach Association of Canada. Now, in the policy itself, as you can see, there are some hyperlinks, so you can follow them, and it will take you exactly where you need to go. Now, I feel that for the most part, people on this call, if you've been with a club for a few years, you've probably already completed most of these modules. It's going to be very important for your newer coaches who may not have done any of those. For example, Making Headway, Foundations of Volleyball, and Making Ethical Decisions Online Evaluations have been around for many years. They were part of our former certification policy. So a lot of people have those. The one that you may have to pay attention to more is the Coaches Association of Canada Safe Sports Safe Sports Training, which is new and was launched last year in April of 2020. So just a note on that. So this, it's really, if you're leading a club, okay? It is your responsibility to make sure that when you list all of your coaches on your club forum, that your coaches meet these requirements, okay? So please check with your coaches, make sure that it's done, it's going to simplify things. Now, if you don't do that, and I'm just going to, I'm just going to go, Carrie, I'm going to take over the sharing, it's just going to be easier from here on. Because I want to share another page. Okay, so you can now see my thing here. Now I just need to move this. Okay, wait. Okay. So when you are in the, so here is our coaches section on our website. This is here on the side, the coach eligibility policy. So once you get there and you click on the screening disclosure form, this is new to this year, so please pay attention. This is going to be a difference from what we've done before, and that, and it's not just about coaches, it's about how you were going to know, or I guess not collect the screening disclosure form this year. So in the past, you have been collecting the police record check from your coaches, and you've also been collecting a copy of their screening disclosure form, which was just like seven-page document. This year, it's a bit different, your, this form is going to be completed online. So once you click on this link, it takes you to the online form. There's a bunch of information there to fill out, name and so on, and you get to choose your role, okay? So what coaches are going to do when they complete this is they will have to, you know, click coach. You will get to choose your club, okay? So once you select coach, another box appears right here. And then you get to choose a club, so please pick the proper club, okay, the club that you're with. And so with your club leader, please remind your coaches to do that, that's going to be very important. And then they're going to move on to the next step, and there's a couple of other pieces of information to enter. You're going to complete a screening disclosure form, and what's going to happen is that we have staff Oakland, let's name him, Oakland will collect all of this information, okay? He will check, sorry, where's that form? Oh, sorry, just go back here. So he will check that the coaches have done, you know, their screening form that is completed, you will check that coaches have completed these modules. And then he will compare his list to your list that you sent in the club forum, and then we'll follow up with you about any inconsistencies, okay? So if coaches are missing from the forum, so you know, you will have obviously all your coaches on your club list. But if he notices that some coaches have not completed this form, he will let you know. If he notices that some of the coaches have not completed any of these modules, he will let you know as well. And if some coaches that you listed on your on your club forum are just not at all in our system, he will let you know as well. So, so this is part of us and our staff connecting with clubs and supporting clubs with with, you know, with some, some of the admin, we want to make sure that we provide you that support. So that's going to, that's what's going to happen this, this coming year when it comes to the disclosure form, okay? So please note that difference for this year. And, and yeah, the last thing I'm going to say, it's at the bottom here, is that coaches who want to attend Nationals should check Volleyball Canada's coach certification policy. It is the same as us. We worked with Volleyball Canada last year when we designed this, and they liked what we had, so they essentially took this and added a couple of pieces. So that's why I mentioned, because they added some pieces to it. So essentially, this has a foundations for their policy, but there's a couple of additional pieces. So just make sure if you're attending Nationals that you're, you are aware of what those are. I don't know that they have, I actually, not sure if they've released an update to it this year. But the one they put in place last year was going to be good for two years, so it should include this year, and you should be able to find it. I'll go back to the PowerPoint. I guess I'll take, I'll do, I'll just do it for here, it'll be easier. And I'll pass it back to Carrie. So the other thing I wanted to mention about coaching, and this is, this is actually a true what's new item for, for this year, since this kind of started in the middle of the fall last year. So our Coach Academy is an online platform that's available and free to all OVA-registered coaches. We started last year in the fall when we started getting back on. We started last year in the fall when we started getting back on court. And wanted to share with all of the membership and coaches and clubs some ideas and tips. On coming back to the court safely and following all of the return to play protocols. So the Coach Academy was created. There's a bunch of content in there. And what's really cool about this platform is that it gives you access to coaching resources, but it also allows you to share your own. Alright, so the goal of this platform that started last year was at the beginning, just really about returning to play safely. But now that we have this platform and that we are utilizing it, we want to make the most out of it. So we're really hoping that this year we can engage you guys and the coaches from across the province. To share and also access resources to help you in your coaching. So that, and, and, and the idea here is to build our community of coaches in Ontario so that we can help each other. There are sections to share drill plans and practice tips. The platform allows you to share videos on top of PDFs and Excel documents. If you want to share some practice or drill plans, we, we can do some skill execution tutorials through those videos. And we also post all of the recordings of the webinars that we do on coach development. So last year we had a coach development series over webinars. All of those webinars are actually accessible through the Coach Academy. And we also have a calendar of events when, when we have new workshops and events happening. There's also a forum that allows you to connect with, you know, each other, ask questions. We had a cool little series last year that we called OVA learns that allowed some coaches from across the province to share. You know, some of their knowledge and answer questions from people. So it's, it's really cool. And here's the link. I do have it pull up on my computer already. So I'm just going to give you a quick look at, at the inside of the Coach Academy. So this is what it is. That's, that's my homepage. Now you can, you know, make your dashboard the way you want. But there's many sections here that we are going to be looking at populating between now and the beginning of the season. And it would be great if, if some of you were actually interested and willing to, to share. So if that's the case, I would appreciate if you reach out to me. So far, not a lot of people have taken on, you know, this, this past year because of obviously everything we went through. The, the, the sharing of drills and everything and information. Was not very, very popular with, with people, but we're hoping that this year as we walk into a, a different year, a good year. Something that's more like a regular year that we can, that we can all get in there and start sharing. So, so yeah, so that's that. Really excited to, to do this. So as, you know, if you be, once you register for your membership, you will get access to this tool if you don't already have access to it. So that is it for coaching. And I guess at this point we can probably finish because there's only a couple of slides and then maybe we can take questions then.
You want to go through this? There's a couple of screening questions. Do you want me to just go through them now? Yeah, okay, we will. Okay. So one is, one question was, is a police record check required in addition to the screening disclosure form? So the answer is yes, but the police record check is still valid for the three years. So if you've already done your paper copy or anything else, that's fine. But as you come forward and you do a new one, you can, you utilize my back check and do it online. So that's something just to ease it a little bit and, and a lot easier for everyone to check because we can check them online, see that it's done. All is, all is great. One of the other questions is how the clubs know when the coaches have completed the screening disclosure forms. Oakland will actually issue a report. So Oakland will be able to be in contact with the screening officer of the club. And, and the club executive president that's looking for it. So he can utilize a report. Of the coaches that as LP said, very important, select your club. So then he can give a summary report to that club of the coaches that have gone through and done their register, their coach eligibility process. So that's something that will not only be able to check for the completeness of the coach being done. But also to help the club compete, complete their club information form required in MRS. So that's where it's, Oakland's going to be a great resource for that and he's excellent at Formstack. He created those. So this will be a, a great test of, of that for Oakland. And there was another question for screening disclosure form. Do we have to do one every year? The answer is yes, but we're on a new screening policy. We actually have aligned now with volleyball Canada. So we have a couple more screening disclosure form questions. So complete the screening disclosure form this year, then the following year, if you are not a new. Coach, then, and you have completed the previous screen disclosure form, you can sign an acknowledgement that nothing has changed. But that won't be until next year. So this year, the answer is yes, answer all the questions that are in there, then we'll have all of those complete. And then we can move forward next year with just doing a summary. Confirmation that there isn't any information that has changed. And then LP, there's one for you. Are there additional coaching requirements for seventeen U plus?
Nope. Coach eligibility policy is the same for everybody. So you're either eligible to participate in OVA again, so you're not. And yeah, and then from there, I didn't touch on all of the, the cool things that we will do for coach development. Over the course of the next year, but you can be certain that there will be a great offering on top, you know, additional to the Coach Academy. Where we'll have more webinars and we'll start to host some in-person stuff again as we, as we get a chance to do so. By the way, I guess like, I'll just mention now because again, it's new. But for those of you who are not aware, the development coach workshop has now an online version. We've run a few of them so far this summer and there is one coming up in, well, there's one happening right now. But there's one coming up in August as well. So if any of you or your coaches in your club wanted to take the workshop, it is now available online. So we will be bringing back those workshops in person, but this one is also available in an online format. And in the fall, we will be piloting the advanced development coach workshop as well in a hybrid slash online version. So stay tuned for that. It may very well be available to all of you at some point in the next few months.
And just speaking of screen disclosures, can Joe, can you just catch, just two more came in from Tracy and Lisa? Could you grab those two questions and then we'll continue on and answer a couple more youth conference at the end?
The screening renewal form to be used this year, if coaches signed one last year, yes, use the new one this year. If they've completed one, I'm sorry, not the renewal, complete the, the, complete the complete. The newest screens closure form because there's a couple of questions out of this year. So do the form this year in, in its entirety, that's in Formstack that Oakland has put together. And then the following, let's get into way, way later. That's when a renewal form, so right now would be applicable. So right now, do the, do the all of screen. Screen disclosure form questions in Formstack. And then if you did do them in July, that is the new one. So that's fine, but you probably did them on paper. It would be great to submit those into Formstack and so it's all in the reportable form. Because then that's a lot easier for the club admin and for even the OVA office to help support the clubs in that scenario. If it was online, great. Did you put a club in or is it for beach? That would be my next question. So, yeah. Oakland will support all of those questions to the nth degree. Thank you.
Thank you. And LP, were you going to continue with those last couple of slides?
I know.
Or is that Carrie?
I feel like Carrie do that, if that's okay with her.
While she's pulling that up, LP, there was another question about a coach development course for August and if it's online, the website.
That's a good question. Let me check. I'll get back to, and I did question period. Go ahead, Carrie.
Okay, as I mentioned before, we're just going to touch on some stuff that will be coming soon. Our OVA regular season calendar, it will be, we're just putting final tweaks on it right now. Like I mentioned in the previous, like right off the top, we are planning on a traditional season. So we're just going to hang on to that for a little bit longer, just so we. Feel out what's happening out there and making sure we're not sending it revision after revision. So. That's coming soon. We do have a town hall scheduled for club administration, what Alicia was talking about, about fees. Event fees, club forums, upcoming policy rule of two. So mark your calendars. That's going to be a good one. And that's coming up in, in August. Youth competition manual will be released at the mid to end of August as it usually does. And again, our Ontario championships update coming in early November, based on our travel. Information that was talked about earlier, hotel booking and age splits and locations and dates. So, and just as a reminder, next year OC's is two locations. So we are at Rim Park and at Hershey's. Paramount Fine Food Center in Mississauga. So just a reminder for that. So two different locations for. Two different locations for twenty twenty-two. See you theme. Great. Um, and look at this, we've got a great news coming up, right? We're opening up, the province is opening up. So as we all know, step through regulations were released on the weekend. As of right now, in the sport and fitness section of the regulations that we are allowed. To have permits out for indoor facilities at fifty percent capacity. Physical distance of two meters between each participant is required. And we are feverishly working on any supporting documents to help you guys work your way through this. And we will be having a town hall on these July twentieth, seven thirty PM. So there's the registration link in there. So make sure you attend that one as well.
Email blast to Dylan will be sending everything out once it's posted. Hopefully the one pager is tomorrow and Friday. The big honkin' manual that we usually have with all the appendixes will be out Friday. So there you go.
Right. So these are just actual excerpts from the documents that are available online for the government. Just reinforcing that we can go inside and we can play in capacities fifty percent. Of the capacity or a thousand people, whatever's less. So and then. Yeah, just letting them know that for recreational memberships, it will be able to be used for indoor, outdoor activities. For school or private. So we are, you know, pushing those school boards and, you know, hoping that they will open up as, as soon as they can. So that's great. And it's really great news for us and we're, you know, finally a bit of great news for indoors. So we're really excited about that. And we'll take some questions and then we'll go from there. And just a reminder that this will be posted. On our town hall section of the website under our COVID regulations. As well. Letter rip, Mark.
Just a couple. One, you just answered just regarding the facilities and action plans. And, and like you said, we are working on those as we speak and we'll be providing those very shortly.
I just want to clarify though, sorry, if it's an action plan or if it's a safety plan, part of the regulations now is a mandatory safety plan. That a permit holder has to have when running events at any facility for any program. So that is an appendix item we have that's on the website now. We're up to appendix M already. So take a look at that. That's all there. And it's all about mitigating your risk, how you're doing crowd control and your screening protocols and communications plans. Everything's there. So take a look at that.
And that's something that, just to add to that, Alicia, because there's a lot of questions around that, that safety plan. That can be done now. That is the piece where it's like, it's, it's there, it's on the appendix. In order to get in your, your permit applications into the school boards, they're going to ask for your safety plan. And also then our return to play protocols will be part of that safety plan for you. So they, they understand your, the permit office will understand that you're part of a recognized sport organization. That has approved return to play protocols that has helped to mitigating the risk for, for sport. On any questions of those, just let us know.
And we have one more, just a clarification around the face masks. Assuming during step three, because we don't know exactly what the rules will be a hundred percent after that. But could you clarify face mask on the court for step three mandatory for athletes? And if so, could that look differently for fully vaccinated athletes? Do we know if this will look different for practice versus tournaments?
Great question. We will get into more discussion that with that this week with the board. As far as right now for outdoor, athletes can remove their masks during play. But keep in mind, there is still overall on all regulations, even in step three, two meters physical distancing is required. The only time you can breach that physical distancing is during the action of play. So you have to be playing in order to breach that physical distance. So same thing for the athlete in action outdoor. If they are playing, that's when they don't require a mask. At any other point, when, when individuals participants can't maintain two meters, it's government regulations, there's masks. Now, we do understand obviously in the forty-five degrees and we're in the rain that's coming in. There's obviously a big issue with masks, but we have, really have to be really smart with it and be able to maintain the two meters. And at that discretion, then, you know, change your mask, remove your mask only when you're able to keep away two meters from someone else. As far as indoor, there'll be further discussion around it, but it is mask required at all times, even while playing.
Thanks, Joe. And last question I have here, this is for Carrie. Athletes born in November twenty-three, two thousand and seven, by birth year, he is fifteen U, but late birthday could play fourteen U. However, two-year eligibility, so can he play thirteen U, question mark? Or now known as rally ball six and six.
Are you doing the math, Carrie?
I'm finding the unmute button. So right now, the fifteen U would be eligible to compete in the TNS right now. So that fourteen U age eligibility, or sorry, TNS. Age eligibility is twenty-four months, which includes a birth year for the fourteen U and the fifteen U on the male side. So that's what it is. And then it would be the half year on the girl's side, the half, so July first twenty. Two thousand and seven, and then the following year, two thousand and eight-eight for the traditional non-specialized. Am I, I'm good, right, LP? We do have age examples and a clear definition of where people fit. Once we get that posted on the website. So we do have these examples and how to place your athletes and see where they fit. And things along that line.
Thanks, Carrie. I know it's always confusing, all those dates thrown out here and there. And from my end, that looks like all the questions have been answered.
Okay, that's great. So thanks, everybody for showing up. We really appreciate your interest and, you know, fingers crossed, we are going to, oh, Alicia's got her finger up.
I think there was one we missed. Sorry if we did ask this. It was about if there's a deadline to submit an application for a new club team. I don't know if you mean a new club in general, but Carrie, do you want to speak to new club process?
Yeah, so we, I believe. We can work with that. Contact me, email me, c campbell at Ontario volleyball dot org. And we can work through their application. We might be flexible this year, considering the fact that we're in brand new. Landscape here with COVID, but if you're looking to start a new club, we do have a, an application process and I'll be happy to help you with that.
And Carrie, just to confirm, so the question was that November twenty-third, two thousand and seven, male, they can play thirteen U?
No, there's, they should be playing traditional and specialized. So that, that twenty-four period includes the twenty-seven, the two thousand and sevens and the, the two thousand and eights. For the TNS stream. Developmentally, you know, a fifteen U does. In a, in a thirteen, LP, I want you to speak to this, please.
Yeah, no, I think we're just being, we're just confusing two things. We're confusing birth year and age group. So your birth year is your birth year. It has nothing to do with your age group technically. Because yes, before, if you were born, you know, if you're taking a. You know, if you're taking a, two thousand and seven, this coming year is going to be fifteen U. But if you look at, okay, they're born in November, so they could also technically play fourteen U, okay. That doesn't now mean that this player is a fourteen U, that means this player is born in two thousand and seven, if you look at our eligibility for the different streams. Two thousand and seven fits into fifteen U and traditional and specialized, you will not see the date. You know, the year two thousand and seven under six on six rally ball, and therefore, if you're born in two thousand and seven, you're not eligible for six on six rally ball. So like. It's going to take a few years, probably for us to stop talking in terms of twelve U, thirteen U and fourteen U, but. These, these words should essentially eventually disappear from our language. Because we're not using them anymore. The only reason why we use them now is because we know that people are familiar with these, that terminology. So, yeah. They like, you technically will not not see twelve U, thirteen U and fourteen U anywhere moving forward. So. It will just be birth years and streams. Format of play. Voila.
Thank you. Okay. Yes, so thanks, everybody, you know, we've got some great news and we're making great progress in the province in regards to beating this pandemic, so. Fingers crossed, we're going to have a hit the ground running in September and. Look for the stuff posted on the website and hopefully we'll see you back here for our other town halls coming up. Club admin and our RTP for stage three.